Okay, six o'clock, so wanted to call the Surveillance Advisory Commission meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Owens. Moreno.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Cohen Thompson.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Got Quorum.
Mister Chair Lee, I'm having trouble hearing some of you, maybe get closer to the mic, I can hear Lance just fine. But, yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the community forum, are there any, is there anyone online or anyone in the audience?
Through the chair, currently do not have any members of the public signed up for the community forum. We do, I do see a couple of members just logging in as we speak. What I can do is start a two-minute timer for interested parties who want to sign up for the community forum. And at the conclusion of that timer, if anybody signs up, I'll let you know, but feel free to carry on with the agenda.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on next to the consent calendar and approval agenda.
Second.
Okay, now. Yeah.
Owens.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cohen Thompson.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, now we're moving on to the report from the committee, there is no report from the chair, but we do have two subcommittees and wanted to give an opportunity for any member of the subcommittees to make a report if they'd like.
The committee that I was on, I volunteered to do the public outreach and engagement, and this is just a brief overview. I sent it out to David today, not knowing really how this was going to be, but this is very short. And it just says SAB policy, commitment to public outreach and engagement, this is a draft. SAB is to implement quarterly public meetings with persons who live, work, and Valeo. Purpose SAB is in advocacy to ensure community members are fully informed with opportunities for engagement and input. Number B, SAB acknowledges that there will always be questionable decisions. Thus SAB is committed to listen in good faith and be responsive to policy and process when making decisions that are intended to improve the quality of life for Valeo as a whole community. Our objectives are to inform the public, decision-makers, and stakeholders. Provide information that is easily accessible, promote transparency through flyers and email notifications, also VCAT and other public service announcements avenues. Our objective is to listen responsibly to community concerns. And some of those public services were Valeo Community Access Television and of course the Valeo City website. That's just the overview and then you can fill in the purpose and the objective.
Okay, before I continue, are we, you had no report, and then the city attorney had no report either?
No, no report here.
Okay, well, we jumped to eight, I just want to make sure we were clear before we kept going.
Right, okay, do we have a report from the city council liaison? Okay.
Nothing to report from.
That's all, I just want to make sure we were on the right order.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll continue though, so I'm a part of the ad hoc group on the work plan. And really, the idea is to have sort of a comprehensive, obviously, plan to present to the entire, this entire body, but also eventually the city council. And then I'm, out of that group, I'm responsible for the creation of an audit policy. I just want to be clear that it's not specific to Raven. The idea is that it's an audit policy of all surveillance technology within the city of Vallejo. And we've had some discussion about that. But, yeah, so, but the intent is to create an audit policy for all surveillance technology within the city of Vallejo. And currently, there is a draft. We haven't, we haven't quite met, I mean, we've shared it with each, with the members of that body, but we haven't quite met to discuss it and get feedback from one another. And so I'm hoping that we can do so within the next, maybe a few weeks, I know the holidays are here, but that is the goal. So, with that, that is it, thank you.
So I want to, I want to just put, give the board one caveat, the council's only authorized an audit plan for the FLOC system, not for anything else. And so if you, if you're interested in doing that, you can, but you need their consent to do that. So it can be part of the work plan, but I would recommend that you do the work plan first so that the council can approve that, and then you have that authority, right, to do that, to finish the audit plan. Otherwise, I don't want, what I'm trying to say is, I don't want you guys to spend your, well, spending a lot of time putting together audit plan and then not have it get approved for some reason. I don't necessarily think that would happen, but I don't know, and I think it would be better if you had some certainty. So if I, my recommendation for you guys is that you focus on getting the work plan, which can include, you know, the creation of this audit plan for all of the technology. Right now, you do have the authority from council to do it for the FLOC system, for sure. I went back and checked the city council meetings for that and confirmed that for you.
Attorney, thank you, thank you for that comment, Mr. Reiser, but would, I mean, couldn't the committee as a whole just vote to authorize the existing subcommittee to take on the audit plan for not just FLOC, but just for all surveillance tech?
Well.
Just do that.
You, you need city council approval to do that because that's not part of your, part of your mandate in the ordinance.
Through the chair, so the, again, the idea, and when we created the ad hoc committee, we agreed that we were going to make an audit plan, we did not specify Raven. But I do appreciate you city attorney, your suggestion that we get permission from the council.
Absolutely, yes.
While we do that, however, I think we can do them simultaneously, while we can create, we can create the, or we can, we can have the creation of a work plan while still doing the, an audit plan and then not have the audit plan hold up the work plan. If the work plan's complete before the audit plan's done, then yeah, let's move forward with getting that before city council so they can approve it. And then, you know, if, if they so choose to say, okay, we approve this work plan, then we have the audit plan ready to go. But I don't, I don't think it's, it's not efficient for us to wait and see what happens when essentially, for the most part, what will work for one system is more than likely to be, to have a lot of overlap with the next system.
Yep, I totally understand, board member, but all I'm doing is letting you know that you don't have authority to do that, and there is a chance that it could not get approved. And I would hate for you guys to put a bunch of effort into something and have it not be useful at some point. I totally understand that, it's just that, all I'm doing is giving you some advice, if you guys want to go and do that, it's your time, so that's fine.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate that.
Chair, regarding that, perhaps it would be better if we would get a copy.
I can't hear whoever's speaking, we need to get closer to the mics, guys.
Work better for us, because that's some intensive work, that perhaps we would get a copy of the policy that's in place. And we could wordsmith that, because I'm understanding from this position that we're thinking we're going to put a plan for, there's already one fourth that stands. Of course, it's not a static document, it can be, it can be, we can wordsmith it, edit it, and it would be better if we had a copy, I'm really addressing this to the chair, if we would have a copy of that report. And then we could work off of that instead of starting from scratch. We can go through that and wordsmith where we come to the conclusion that this should be a part of that document. As opposed to starting from scratch, writing something, and like the Commissioner Chair Stewart said, that there would be overlapping, we don't want to overlap, that's a lot of time.
So, this really isn't on the agenda to discuss tonight, it was just a report, so we need to move on to the other items. Otherwise, we're risking, we're on the verge of violating the Brown Act is what I'm trying to say, and I don't want us to do that. So we, we do have an item tonight about the audit plan for the FLOC system, where we can maybe discuss some of that.
I'll leave that thought with my chair.
Point taken, okay.
Sorry, sorry, Chair, but real quick, just a quick question for the secretary, and I don't, I hate putting you in his position, real quick question. Given Tuesday's discussion on, on this body having regular meetings, have you gotten an update from the City Manager's Office on when that'll come forward?
We, again, we're off the agenda here, we need to, we need to move forward, guys.
Did not get part of the reports, no?
Yeah, no.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
So, before we move on, sorry, yeah, I'm not done with this. The suggestion that we can't talk about it further because it's not on the agenda is a little frustrating because we made specific requests that this be on the agenda. Similarly, last time, we made multiple requests for future agenda items that aren't included on the agenda and are still included as future agenda items. So perhaps we need to revisit how we create agenda items and how early that draft goes out, because it seems like the, the agenda we're getting doesn't reflect what we should be talking about.
So, what's, what's on the agenda tonight are items that were mandated by the city council at their last meeting when they discussed FLOC for you to consider. So that's why you have these items, the items that are on the future agenda items will, will be on your next, your next meeting.
Right, those items are items from the past meeting that were supposed to be at this meeting's agenda. So just because the city council can request something we can talk about, doesn't mean that's the only thing we can talk about.
Well, no, it's not a request, it was, it was a direction that we have you consider these items tonight.
Sure, maybe you missed what I said, I said, that doesn't mean it's the only thing we can talk about. So what I'm suggesting is, we need to be better communicating what the agenda includes, because it seems like, whether it's the city attorney's office, or the city itself, the staff, putting it together seems to be missing what we discussed the last time.
Sorry, Chair, quick question, Randy, I just, I'm hoping this is the answer, correct answer. The items that are on the future, are under future agenda tonight, those are a part of this two-step process, right? And so are we, is that why they're not on the agenda tonight?
They are, yes.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
So, so to clarify the item, to clarify that Tony's question and comment there. So the items currently on future agenda items, number 12, will be, the, will be on the action calendar for the next meeting, is that, is that?
No, we've, we've, they're on, there's a two-step process that's required by the city's code, right? Chapter 2.26 of the municipal code requires when a member asks, a member of a body such as yours, asks for an item to be on the agenda, that it first be agendized, to be considered by the entire board, to be placed on the agenda. So that's what would come back to you at the, at the next meeting. And if you decide to put it on the agenda, then it'll come back at another meeting for you to consider and to deliberate on. And so we, we really do need to move on because we are way off what's on your agenda this evening.
Okay. Any other comments before moving on with the action calendar or questions? Anyone? Okay, moving on with consideration of an audit plan for the FLOC surveillance system? Captain Batista.
Captain Batista's away.
I'm sorry, yeah, Captain Batista's away, is there anyone for him or representing the city police department? Thank you. Please turn on the microphone in front of you.
Greetings, my name's Lieutenant Josh Cathan with the Vallejo Police Department. I'm in charge of the Investigations Division, assisting Captain Batista with FLOC. Good evening to you, Chair, Board, and we're having a good day so far. Would you like to know?
I know that we, we had added in the packet related to this item, a list of audits that are possible to run within the FLOC system. So these are an organizational audit, a network audit, and an evidence log, video stream access audit. That's specific to ALPR and the Pant tilt zoomcondor cameras. Specific to Raven, there's, there's, because it's only auditory, there is an auditory history audit that can be run. So that was obtained through FLOC, and in the packet, you'll see the information that can be gleaned from those audit. We also have Trevor from FLOC on, on the line as well, in case there is some technical questions that, you know, when you start getting into the deep aspects of the software and audit capabilities, we will likely have to defer to him.
To add to that, we also provided the current gunshot detection policy, as well as what we're proposing as the new policy for gunshot detection.
So again, through the chair, this audit plan capability sounds to be, just from listening in as I got here, a discussion for you all to kind of discuss what that may or may not look like. We wanted to provide the information that the system can, can provide in terms of information.
Yes, I have one question, so in these, in these, in these usernames, is it possible to tell the organization that the person who's making the request is from? I'm not sure where that, where that comes out in this, in this audit log.
Yes, under the network audits, when we are auditing, that is internal and external searches of our system, it will list the agency and the officer.
Okay.
And for the organizational audits, those will be, each, each Vallejo police employee will have its own unique username, so we'll be able to see which employee accessed, accessed those.
Okay.
The question on one of the, one of the elements here, what does moderation refer to? It's in both organization and network audit.
Yeah, I don't know offhand, I would refer that to FLOC.
Trevor, are you online?
I am, could you please repeat the question?
Yes, the question is, under the organizational audits and network audits, there is a category called moderation, and it says, if triggered by the search, free form feature.
So, what free form is, is a blank text box where if you don't have a specific license plate for a vehicle, you can put in a particular type of vehicle, like a red Ford F-150. And so that would be filled in, in that spot, if they weren't looking for a specific license plate, but were looking for a vehicle characteristic.
In crime investigations, oftentimes our detectives will see, there'll be a crime that will occur, the person will say it was a red four-door small vehicle, and we can then go into and conduct those more refined searches and find different vehicles that match that description, and we will get a list of possible, possible prompts.
Thank you for that clarification also, so I take it text prompt is just another version of that? Another version of that filtering? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
So, in the network audits, it talks about the users who have access to search the agency's cameras. Is there an audit log of changes to that access list?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Well.
And can you direct this board member to the part you're talking about in the network?
Yeah, well, I'm actually, I'm actually looking for another, another lot, audit, or another log, because when you're doing a network audit, not everybody, you know, who has access to the system can access the Vallejo data. So, so we must specify somehow, who is, who is authorized to access that data and who's not, outside of our jurisdiction. So, so that is, is that a set of permissions that we manage here? And do we have an audit log of changes to that set of permissions?
I see, I don't know that we have an audit log to that change in permissions. We constantly get requests from other California law enforcement agencies to share the system. So I don't know, I'd have to ask Trevor if that can be audited, so you can see the difference between it, but.
So there's no, so there's no audit log of users that are approved? So VPD would be able to provide you, just based, there's a list internally of everyone who has granted permissions, other agencies that are granted permissions, and so they could provide you any changes, people that have been added or, or removed from that list. So that's in, that doesn't have a specific audit, but you do always have a list of everyone you're sharing with. And VPD could provide the regular updates of whoever has been added or removed from that list.
Okay, so VPD has control over that list?
Yes, less of an audit, more of a list.
Okay, so you, so, so we don't need to rely on FLOC to manage that, you're managing that, okay.
And also, with the transparency portal, you can choose to put on your transparency portal the departments that VPD is sharing with, and when changes are made by VPD, those will be reflected on the transparency portal as well.
All right, thank you.
I also wanted to point out two things in relation to that. First of all, Lance could probably answer part of this better than I. I believe that there is a login that does keep track of who logs into the system to access FLOC. But secondly, also, the board should be aware that there, there is, there are two sections in state law in the government code. One that does not allow us to share any data whatsoever with federal immigration authorities. There is also another more general section that doesn't allow us to share any data with any law enforcement agency outside the state of California. So just so that you guys are aware of that.
Chair, may I? So, under the organizational audits and the network audits, it names organizational administrators. Who are those individuals within VPD?
Myself, Captain Batista, I believe our crime analyst, Helen Pig, there's a list of the administrators, I don't know them all.
Could we get a copy of that list?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Additionally. Where was it here, I think it's.
So, we talked about who are, who has access, you said it's a list, and there's no like trail of like breadcrumbs of what they did, did within that, when there's a network search from outside entities?
No, if an outside entity conducts a search, we are able to audit that and see what they searched and what.
That didn't, that's not what it sounds like Trevor just said, that's why I'm just double checking.
Oh no, so there, you can absolutely, then, so what the network audit is, is a audit of any departments that you are sharing with, and what their searches within your system is. So there's absolutely a audit trail for anyone that utilizes VPD's system. Additionally, we just rolled out a additional audit feature, where you can see if those searches actually resulted in a hit. Previously, you could only see if another agency did a search that included VPD's images. Now, not only that, you will see if they searched for that red, or ABC 123, and that was found on one of VPD's cameras. Audits will now also show that, that was, that that search from another agency resulted in a hit.
Got it, okay, thank you. And then, down here, where it says, event, event log, video stream access. So, reading this, I understood this to mean, is it, is it tracking what, what other folks are picking up, picking up on their screen when they're searching? Or did I misunderstand the, sort of like keystrokes, or you can follow, or track one's path?
No, I don't believe that, that's in reference to the Pan-Tilt-
So that, it's an actual camera? Like, it's, okay, thank you, that, I apologize, thank you. I think those are all the questions I have now, Chair, thank you. So in the event that Flock may be compelled by legally to get data from us, is that logged in the audit?
So if there is a legal document or a warrant served to Flock for VPD's data, our contract requires within 24 hours that we alert Vallejo of that, so that the city can respond in the way that they want. Because again, we make very clear to the subpoenaing agents, agency, whoever that might be, that this is not owned by Flock, we store it, we do not own the data, and we direct them to Vallejo, and we alert Vallejo in the event that, that request is given.
Is that sharing potentially of the data audited, or auditable? And maybe that's for VPD? Yes, so you're talking about trying to have a backend access through Flock, and then they would contact us if there was some type of legal process that was served on them. Most likely, they would also serve that on us as well, because we are the users of the data. However, any of those accesses to said data would be captured in these audits. And how is that visibility transferred out to the public? That an external entity that maybe we're not able to share normally is being shared your data with? It's never happened, so I don't know. I would imagine, again, just speculating, that would, this board would be a forum for that, most likely. We report out at all of our meetings about usage and all the reports that you get and the informational items. We would not have a problem reporting that out in, in this forum. It's never happened, I don't anticipate it happening, but if it were, this could be the forum for that. Thank you.
I have a question about the network audits. Does, will the username indicate the agency, or is there some indication of the agency that's made the requests?
Yes, it will list the agency and I believe the officer that ran it.
So it'd be the name of the officer, that username, plus the agency that they're working for? So if, if people from the same agency, multiple different users, we'd be able to identify a lot of requests are coming from San Diego, even though they're from different officers?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and don't forget, that's, that's just one piece, they will have to put the reason, all the, so all of that stuff will be contained in the audit. And if there's anything that raised red flags, you know, kind of as you guys kind of move towards what an audit plan would look like for your body, which is what the item is for, those are things I think you should consider, you know, in terms of, if you see through the audit, a lot of, you know, you give the example of San Diego, let's just stick with that, and there's multiple searches from San Diego, they're not listing the reasons, they're not, those are things that should be flagged in any type of audit. I don't think those things would occur, but if they did, that would be something that would be flagged.
And then, just to add to that, we, this week, changed the mandatory settings for searching the ALPR system, where you now have to enter a reason and a case number, or a reason and an incident number, otherwise you can't do it.
Quick, quick follow-up. The, and maybe I missed this, but when, under network audits, under username, and it says slightly anonymized, will we still be able to tell the officer?
Yeah, the example of that would be, my last name is Knight, and it may say R-K-N-I-G, or something like that, it's just for brevity.
Not very anonymous.
Not very anonymous, no. Just, the-
Chair may interrupt just for a second. I, I've gotten a, a email from one of the council members who's listening, they can't hear either, either DC Knight or, or Lieutenant Catham at the table, and they're having trouble hearing some of you too, so if I, again, could ask you to speak really closely into the mic, so that they could hear you.
Randy, can you hear me, from where you're at?
Uh, it's very low, but I, I mean, I, I can, as long as everything is quiet.
We, yeah, we have a new microphone set up here, that we're all, all of us in the room are working for.
That's better, right there.
Put it right to your mouth.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just for, for the reason code for both organizational and network audits, what are the parameters in there, or, you know, what are the limits in terms of like, number of characters, text, and abbreviations and the like?
I don't know what the limit on characters is, but it is pretty free-form, that you can enter a crime code, or you can enter, you could put in, for instance, a robbery is a 211, you could put in 211, you could put in robbery.
Are you seeing frequently like, long sentences? It's, they're fairly brief, and in terms of just giving the reason for said, especially if it couples an incident number, or a case number, that can be referenced back to a larger investigation, or something like that?
Any other questions from the committee?
I have a question, a couple of questions. So, I'm looking at the recommendation, and it says, Board to discuss and consider potential audit plan for Flock Surveillance System, and then make recommendations to City Council. And then, here, background discussion, consideration for an audit plan for Flock Surveillance System. But this, this is, what we have here are the audit exports. So is there gonna, is VPD gonna present a plan for us to work with? Or are we, are you looking for us to essentially, like I said, like I mentioned earlier, kind of start from zero? Because I, because, for a few different reasons. One, the council kicked this back down to us, but now, we're in November, so I think what the Flocks maybe like, two months overdue now? Two, if we create that, theoretically, we have no meeting until January, and there's already a lapse in payment to Flock, and, you know, that's, thank God, that's not for me to handle. But, what are, what are the next steps that you are expecting from us tonight? If we, if we move forward, we're, there's no, there's nothing before us to actually present to council. So as I understand it, item A is a discussion for you all to discuss what an audit plan would look like, and what you would recommend to the City Council. So as part of the agenda packet, we provided you what Flock advises we can bring forward, the type of information. So I, I envisioned that to be a discussion amongst the board, to determine what you would want that plan to be, based upon what we, as a user of Flock, can provide. As it relates to recommendations to the council for gunshot, gunshot detection, I believe that's action item B, is what, we're gonna talk a little bit more in depth about that. No, sure, but the Flock, Flock would also a council referral, the, the Raven system would also a council referral. Go ahead.
Can I see if I can answer that, or add some light to it at least? My understanding on the audit plan, I don't think that the City Council expects you to necessarily develop an audit plan for the entire Flock system, before they consider this item, before the end of the year. So there, there are some, and DC Knight can probably talk about this a little bit more, there are some limitations and, and some deadlines, as far as funding for this system, that I think we can work with, and I, I mean, I think that we can take care of paying Flock, and work on the audit plan, and implement that, because that is, you know, as you said, board member, one of the, one of the council referrals back down to SAB to do. I think tonight's discussion was just to get it kicked off and get it started, and I don't think that they necessarily expect you to have it done by December 31st.
Well, that was my understanding, was when, actually, I went back and watched the meeting last night, and, and it seemed like that was exactly what they were asking for, that they wanted SAB to create an audit plan, not just around Raven, yes, this is Knight, but also around the Condor and the Falcon.
That, that is what they want, yes.
Right, but, so I, I don't, I don't understand what, what the, where the disagreement lies. I think, and I don't want to mischaracterize, I, I see that as related, but separate issues. So- Because they didn't want to move forward with Flock, because there was no policy, but there's no policy tonight here for us, and even if we drafted one, again, theoretically, we're not meeting until January. Yeah, and I think that, I was there at that meeting, and, do you want to go Randy, or do you want me to jump in?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, they want, the, the policy and the, and the audit plan are two different things, right? So the, the policy's on item B for you tonight, to, to talk about and hopefully work on, and I think that PD does have some proposals for you on that. The audit plan, though, I, I agree with you, board member, I don't know how you would possibly have it done. I don't even think, even if you had a meeting in January, I'm not sure it would be done then, because I think it is going to require some significant work on the part of the board, and perhaps, you know, a subcommittee, right? That, that you're gonna have to take a look at all the information that Flock's providing, and then, and then, you know, come up with your own ideas as far as how to, how to audit the system. So I think that if, you know, a, a recommendation to council is, could be, for example, okay, we're willing to do this, we recommend that you move forward with the purchase of the Raven system, and while you're doing that, we're going to, we're going to develop an audit plan for all of it, right? Not just Raven, because we already have a contract that's still in place for the other systems, that's not going away.
We're talking about the gunshot detection system, no, I'm sorry, not that now.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about all of, for as far as the audit plan goes, the, the council mandate is for all of Flock, not just the, not just gunshot detection.
But I guess it goes back to my original point, there's no policy before us, and-
No, there's no, there's no, right, there's no, not a policy, I don't, I don't want to get those two things confused.
There's no plan before us, right?
Right.
Specifically, they asked that there be a plan for the Flock system, before moving forward.
They, they asked for the SAB to develop a plan, correct?
Right? And so now, Captain Knight, you, we have this earmarked money, that we're potentially at risk for, for losing, or of losing, because we don't have a plan before us. And, yeah, we tried to meet last month, and folks' schedules don't line, didn't line up, but it would have been nice to have, maybe even as a suggestion, suggestion of a plan for, for an audit, for an audit policy within the system, because now, again, we're, we're gonna just be lingering on, and then I can, I see it now, City Attorney Reisner, I see it now where this, we move forward, and then there's gonna be this, this, this push and pull with staff and the council, that, hey, this went to the, this went to the SAB, and what did they do with this? And I don't want that to come back and say, oh, well, the SAB didn't present a plan, the SAB wasn't brought a plan, and it's not like we can discuss this before the meeting, because that's also a Brown Act violation.
Yeah, there, I don't think that it's our intention to go back to council and say, you didn't create a plan.
But there's no plan here for us to agree on.
Absolutely, we understand that, and we didn't expect that there would be a plan available, because we, we don't know what to do with it until we talk to you, right?
So then, so then the idea is to, for this to come back to us, and we're still not gonna move forward with the Raven technology, then that, that might-
Well, I don't know if that's the idea, that will be up to council.
Alright, thank you. Through, through the chair, I, I think that, I was at that meeting, as you know, board member. I watched it last night. Yes, I was there personally. A lot of things got confusing in the wash, a lot of things got commingled, there's a lot of misunderstanding that I tried to kind of keep control of, but it was a little bit difficult. And again, my understanding from leaving that is, the council seeks to have SAB work with the department to create a audit plan, in general. I did not believe that to be attached to the specific item, which is gonna be item B later, to the recommendation to move forward with gunshot technology. Again, separate but related items, by us providing you what the Flock system can provide in terms of audits, we can start doing that immediately, but that's still not an audit plan, right? So we can start doing the audits immediately, we can start providing those to the SAB ahead of, as part of our regular information that we provide, but that, that would not be considered a plan. I envision this to be a bit more of a comprehensive plan that you guys are gonna come up with in that regards, on, on the part of the board, so that's through the chair. So Chair, sorry, but I'm, I'm, I'm done here, but, so, I'll say this, the, we had, we have, and even prior to said council meeting, we have an ad hoc committee, were, willing to work on a plan, but we were told that we could not move forward, and yes, it got cleared up via email, but in my mind, and no disrespect, it, it came, it came off, it's like, you can't do this without council approval, and then not, but not, not until someone stepped in and said, well, we gave approval, did it become a little bit more clear? But, again, we already have a body that's willing to do, do this work, and now it's, I feel like, I feel as if it's become even more convoluted, with the idea that, okay, hey, council said you guys do this, so you do this, rather than, hey, council, they're already working on this, like, you know, let's make, let's maybe support them in some other way to really move this forward, rather than, now we're here, we've been trying to reinvent the wheel essentially. And that is all, Chair, thank you.
Um, and, yeah, go ahead, alright, alright.
Hi, um, to the Chair, to the Chair and the members, what we're looking at now, is this basically, is this basically an overview, what we have, of what a policy contents would be?
No, our understanding is, is we are providing the board with what the system's capabilities are.
Right.
In terms of a plan, that's gonna involve, you know, frequency, it's gonna involve, you know, a lot of other things that, again, I'll defer to the Chair.
So just, just to try to, try to move this forward, would, would, would it be possible for the subcommittee to work with members of the police department to, to develop audit plan, maybe based on existing audit plans for different types of technology, not surveillance-oriented, that, that the police department already is, is working with? Would that be, just wanted to propose that, would that be possible to take up?
Chair, actually, I, I fully intended on coming here tonight, as a member of that body, to ask how we can move forward with PT and the City Attorney's Office, so just for transparency.
I have a, I have a question. How, what is the retention period on this audit data? Is it a year?
My understanding is, it never disappears.
It never airs. So there's no natural deadline for an audit policy, because we can always go back in time and look at it, so I, I think we should not see this as a deadline, as, has anything to do with the signing of this, of this contract.
I don't see it that way, but the council sees it that way.
I, I haven't heard that. Okay.
Is it, may I? So it would be the, the same subcommittee that's working on the work plan? That, or is it a, a separate ad hoc committee that's developing this policy? Or, I'm sorry, plan, not policy?
I guess that would be up to the body, but the intention, the intent of the work plan and the audit plan, the audit policy within the work plan, was to create an overarching audit policy within, within all VPD technology, surveillance technology. So if, if we here so choose to say, okay, we want to, we want that ad hoc committee to do that work, or continue to do that work, then sure, then we're already- Uh, we want that ad hoc committee to do that work or continue to do that work, then sure, then we're already fine and we're just, now we're here just spinning our wheels. Um, and maybe, and, and you all can, I guess, could we provide, provide, could we provide input without breaking the Brown Act, City Attorney Reisner?
You mean right now?
Yeah. Could this body provide input, input?
You can, yeah, we're ta, we're talking about the audit plan. So you, absolutely you can.
But it, but this is specific to Flock and the, of the intent was an overarching policy. So that we're no, there's no issue there, right?
So I think that you could, yes, if, if you're, if the intent of your comments are to wrap up the Flock audit plan in the, in, in an overall audit plan. As a solution or potential solution to the issue, sure, you could talk about that.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, that's, that's up to us if we want to just have it, have that ad hoc committee do that.
And, and to the City Attorney, City Attorney Reisner, that's, that's acceptable to have that same ad hoc committee. Take control of this particular plan.
And that, again, that, yeah, that's up to the, you as a body, but yes, you, that, that's, there's no legal issue, no legal issue there. You can have that. Subcommittee do that. I think one thing that, that might be a consideration for you is, is time. And again, I'm no expert in creating these kinds of plans. But it seems to me that to develop, uh, an overarching audit plan for all surveillance equipment in the city. Um, and there's surveillance equipment all over the place. For example, there's a SCADA system at the water department that collects data from water customers. There is, uh, there is of course the police department system. There are the mobile cameras that we have. That, uh, you're already working on developing a policy on. There are other departments that use certain types of surveillance. Systems. I don't know if that's what your intent is to wrap all of those up into an audit plan. Or if you're just talking about an audit plan for their surveillance systems PD uses. So it could become a very big job is what I'm trying to say, if we're going to do it for every single department in the city. Because there's a lot of information I think that you would need in order to do that. And probably. There would be a different way of auditing different systems depending upon what they are. So I'm just throwing that out there for you guys to consider in your thinking and discussion about this.
Thank you. And I, I do agree. Um, perhaps to simplify and move things forward, I had a suggestion. Which is if everybody else on the board agrees, I'm fine with. The existing ad hoc committee taking up this discreet audit plan for the Flock surveillance system. I would suggest that maybe we can provide some guidance right now on things that it should include, based on what we're seeing before us. That ad hoc committee can then come up with a plan. Working with the police department. And then potentially present it at our next meeting, which I assume will be in January unless we have a special meeting before that. And then at the January meeting, we can review and be prepared to vote on that plan.
May I, may I ask a question, Chair?
Go ahead.
Do you want, do you want staff to develop some kind of draft plan or perhaps go out and see what other agencies have done and bring that to you? As a way to assist you.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. Yeah, that would be super helpful. And also members of the existing subcommittee can also, uh, reference. Audit plans of, you know, similar situated cities that do, do deploy the, the, uh. Flock or similar surveillance tech, um, as well. Just to, you know, reference and then help to leverage maybe some parts of it into our plan as well. That sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Uh, is there a representative from Flock here still?
Yes.
Since you're in this business, are there other cities or, um, local, um, communities that. Have something like this in play that you could refer that to us?
Yes, we'd be happy, uh, to provide examples we see from across the country, either with ourselves or people who use other vendors for audio detection. And so we'd be happy to compile that and provide that as a resource to the PAB.
So Trevor, I think they're, they're looking for not just the audio detection system for all this, all of the Flock technology that we use.
Yes, uh, we'd be happy to provide all the, uh, whether it's a template. Or, uh, examples from other cities. Very happy to.
Great, thank you.
This question's for Manny, actually. Manny, is our council liaison online?
Yes, she is.
No, our, our council liaison is, uh, beginzer, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, he is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I think we, we have a, um, a, a plan to move forward. So we're going to move.
Before we move, uh. I think part of this was to suggest some thoughts for the ad hoc committee. And I'm happy to go first. Alright, so one thing I'd ask that the ad hoc committee consider is. The sort of unique scenario we have of the department and an audit of how the department is using Flock. Via an orga, organization audit versus a network audit and how other departments, how perhaps Flock itself is using the system. And I would ask that the, the plan consider that. In when requesting information, we get information regarding how the department is using the system as well as how others are using the system. I'd also say, and this is perhaps self-evident, but, uh, maybe the format of the received audit. Is something to consider, something readable and useful would be nice. And other than that, someone mentioned frequency. I might suggest. A discussion of. Frequency to consider. Sometimes it's not helpful to be too frequent. But on the other hand, not so infrequent that we forget about it.
Any other suggestions for the subcommittee to factor? Okay. Alright, uh, thank you. Alright, uh, we're moving now to action B. Review of policy for the use of Flock surveillance system.
Randy, does the, um, item A need to be voted on?
Uh, no, I don't think so. They, they gave, yeah, we, we, we understand what we're doing. We got direction.
Okay.
And you're, and you're going to, Chair, Chair Lee, your, my understanding is, is that the. Existing ad hoc committee is going to take this up and, and we're going to provide additional information. By providing copies of things other jurisdictions do and maybe perhaps even providing suggestions to you and what. What we, what staff we at least think should be in the audit plan.
Yes, that's correct. And also the company volunteer, uh, the company also suggested that they, they can. Do a survey of.
Right.
Audit plans that they'll also share with the, with the board.
And that, and that you'll, and that the ad hoc committee would work with PD to, to help develop that, yeah.
I'll also share what we currently have, uh, with the secretary to send. To send out. To send to the rest of the board so that we don't break the Brown Act.
Do you see that? Mike is off if you want to turn it on.
Okay, I, now we're, I think we can finally move on to B.
Okay, so we provided you with the current, um, gunshot detection policy and. Then provided a proposed newer gunshot detection policy with the idea of. Adding some of those safeguards that the council was mentioning during the council meeting. I think if you take a look at the two policies, you'll see. Significant amount of additional language. And I think that's also something that kind of got lost in the wash. Sorry, I moved spots. That they'd indicated that we needed to have a policy. We had a policy that we had worked extensively with, with the, the board. But one of the things that the, the council pointed out, which they're not wrong, it did not contain, um, uh, uh. The amount of safeguards, um, that are in the ALPR policy, which has also been approved and worked on with the Surveillance Advisory Board. So. What we did is carry over a majority of those safeguards to, um, address those concerns raised by council. So, um, if you look at the two policies, I took my copies and just highlighted, it's mostly towards the latter end of the policy. Where we added, uh, several of those safeguards. What I'm looking for tonight, before I have to go back before council and ask for. To move forward with this gunshot tech, technology, if you guys so recommend. I'd like to take any other suggestions that you have, may have for the policy that can be integrated in. So then we can leave potentially. Fingers crossed from today's meeting with a second, second time approved SAP policy and with more safeguards. And potentially a, a second recommendation to move forward with the, um, gunshot detection technology.
Okay, um, I'll go. I did my homework last night. I, I have a few questions actually. So. And I want to go back and say, I apologize for that last item. We did complete a, a few of the different things. And so thank you for being patient with me. Now, this particular request to, to me, um, and I went back and watched it, I timestamped it. The request for the guardrails wasn't specific to the Flock surveillance system though. Um, specifically from Councilmember Matthias. It didn't, he was very, it was very general and broad. So you, you agree that it was very broad and not specifically to the Flock system?
Well, I'd have to know exactly what comment that he made that you're referring to, but I, I do know that. Flock in general, the technology of Flock safety, which encompasses several things, got conflated during that discussion. And I was really trying to emphasize to the council that we were talking about Raven gunshot auditory detection, you know, technology.
Can I, go ahead.
Can I provide some additional information? So, so part of, part of the problem. That occurred when we presented the Raven technology is when the package was put together. The actual contract document that was put in the package was a document that we had previously modified with you, right? You, you provided some suggestions and we changed a number of things in that contract, but the one that got. Presented to council didn't have that language in it. So they didn't see that. And that was one of the things that they were very concerned about. That those, uh, those guardrails weren't in the contract, when in fact they were already because that contract had already been approved and it's in place. There's not an extra contract for, for Raven. It's the same contract, right? It's just an order for additional equipment under the same contract. We're going to talk about that, uh, a little bit more in the next item, but I wanted to put that information out there. So that you would be aware of what happened at the council meeting and one of the reasons that they, they, uh, they felt that there weren't enough guardrails. There actually were guardrails. We just presented staff, we staff presented them with, uh, the wrong document. Rather than the document that already exists, we presented them with a, uh, you know, the, the form, the form document that Flock. Provided originally, which was a mistake on our part.
Alright, um, I'll move forward. Um, it's a couple of things. So what, how was the cost broken down for the actual, the, the detection system? I just want to understand that with, with regard to the, the congressional earmark. Like, so what, what's one flock cost the city? Like one, one, um, gunshot detection, detection machine cost the city?
It, it's, uh, it's priced out based upon square miles.
Okay.
So we currently.
We have four, right?
So we have currently with the beta test have four square miles of, um, coverage. And that covers about one eighth of the city. Uh, and that, the cost of that is.
Eleven and a half thousand a month.
So it's two hundred and ten for, will get, get us a year and a half.
Right. But that, that's the actual earmark. That's not what we're paying now, right?
We're pay, well, we did nothing in a beta test. We didn't pay anything.
Absolutely.
I think it is, Trevor can confirm, I think it's a hundred and forty thousand.
A year.
Per square, can you, can you confirm the pricing in terms of my square mile?
I, I need a second to pull up the contract. I don't have that information right offhand.
So this is information I got from, from the meeting from ten fourteen. We have four square miles of coverage. At thirty-five thousand per square mile.
Yes, that's right.
Right? At four hun, uh, one hundred and forty thousand a year, right? Alright, and then, so that, that, that breaks down to, um, eleven thousand five hundred a month, right?
I don't know the monthly breakdown.
Okay, so my question is, what is the cost for one Raven detection, gunshot, gunshot detection system? Like the actual like device itself?
So it's, it's not an actual device. It is a, um, collection of hundreds of sensors placed throughout the city. And there's a number of sensors. That will get you, depending on the geographic location, a particular one square mile.
So as I'm walking my dog and I see this item on a, on a light pole, what's that item cost us?
It's, it's not costed by sensor. It's, it's priced by square miles, square miles.
Yeah, we don't. DC Knight, I mean, we, we don't actually, it's not our equipment, right? The, the equipment still belongs to Flock. So we're not buying the equipment. We're, we're, but we're paying for the software and assist them, the, the right to use the equipment.
Okay.
Is that, is that accurate? That was my understanding.
I, I just didn't, I didn't think that was the, the board member's question, but yes, I.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, well, he was asking you how much does one cost? We're not actually buying one.
Device cost. So where are we, we're, we're not only paying for the software, we're paying for the use of the, well, we, we will be paying for the use of the, the device also, right?
Y- yes.
So in a cost breakdown, what the, in a lot, like, if you look at the line item, what does the actual device cost us? Or are they comping the, the, the device because we're paying for the software overall? Absolutely, but they deal with this every day. That's why I'm asking, DC Knight.
Yeah, Trevor, can you clarify? Uh, we're kind of getting into costing and the, the sensors and things, things like.
Yeah, so, yep. So as was mentioned, it says a package on a, a per square mile. So I suppose you could take the, the entirety of the cost. And divide it by the total number of sensors if you want to get a full breakdown. Um, so that, that would. Kind of get to the potentially what you're asking for, but as was mentioned, it's a, a. A fee for service for the per square mile.
Rephrase the question then. In a square mile, in one square mile, how many devices are we putting up?
There is, and it's been a while since I've looked at this. There's a two hundred and some odd sensors to cover that four hundred square miles. I don't think that, I don't think that is a, again, I'm not the expert in this, but I don't think you can give a definitive answer to that because it. It's dependent upon the geographics and different things in terms of the, the. The sensors work together to triangulate an actual auditory sound. Am I understanding your question?
Yes, I, I'll, I'll leave that alone. I'll, I'll, we, we can talk about that offline. My next question is, um, or more of a comment. Um, who, so this new language in this draft policy. Where do we get this new language from? Who, who drafted, who added the new language and kind of who was consulting on, on staff and then City Attorney, City Attorney's Office?
So that was Captain Batista, Lieutenant Catham, Lieutenant Ty, and that language was gleaned, like I said before. Directly from the previously SAP approved ALPR policy, um, to, to carry those safeguard, guardrail language over into this policy. To make sure that they were consistent.
Okay, so, so then he, actually I have here underlined, all data gathered by the GSAD are officially, for official use for, uh, for this department, yada, 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 yada. That's already in the ALPR policy then, what you're saying?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, uh, under data collection and retention, same thing. Four, four, three. Yeah, four, three, four point three, three. Same thing from AL, the ALPR policy.
Yes, yes. The, the captain and I had some several conversations about this. We had just basically said, based upon council feedback. And when you look at the previously approved, uh, gunshot detection policy, pretty short, right? And it, it was absent of a lot of that, uh, information. And the council did raise those concerns. So we said, it's best to just take that same language, carry it over because it's the same, um, technology system. Just carry that, that information over if applicable. Some of the stuff doesn't apply, ALPR, maybe a little bit different. So it's not all apples to apples. So we carried over what we thought was applicable to gunshot detection technology.
Okay, last, last few things, Chair. In this first paragraph here, under, uh, data collection and retention, it says, the investigation bureau captain is responsible for ensuring systems and processes are in place. I would suggest that we change that to the, the, to shall. So we cross out, um, is responsible for and put shall. And then ensure systems and processes are in place for a proper collection of data, of collection and retention of gunshot, um, detection data.
You want, you want to change it to shall be responsible? Am I, is that right?
Vectors into the, this part you're talking about? So are you talking about where it says is, it should be shall be?
Yep, is, shall, uh, uh, yep, shall be, no. Shall ensure.
Is responsible for and have it say.
Shall ensure, yeah.
Oh, shall ensure. Got it. Okay.
And then it mentions the data that's collected from vehicles is. Is data actually, where is the data kept? Is it actually kept in the service vehicles or are they kept in another place?
So the data is actually kept on the Flock website. It's a recording of, it's a five second recording of the sound of a gunshot or multiple gunshots. It can be accessed from a car. It can be accessed from a laptop or from a laptop or from a desktop.
Right. So, so then the next line in that same paragraph, it says data will be transferred from vehicles. To designated storage in accordance with department procedures. So there's no data actually kept in the vehicles currently.
No.
No. So like even without this policy, there's no data kept in the vehicles?
No.
So then this line is pretty relevant then, is what you're saying?
Yes, I would say this.
If I, if I may, my, my hunch is that that was likely written for a dash cam LPR. Whereas our Flock services are stationary LPRs. So I, that, that would not be relevant to the services that Flock provides.
All right.
That might be a carryover from the ALPR into that's not applicable.
And then when we're referring to the data storage policy, which policy are you referring to? Is it eight oh three or eight oh five? And can we have that stated in the actual. Policy, manual policy here?
So part, part of the problem of putting a number to the policy is the policy's changed. So if you get rid of eight oh three, using the number eight oh three, like you said. If you take eight oh three and that policy changes, for example, say eight oh two is deleted. Our system will renumber all the policies up. So by leaving it generic and saying what the data retention policies are, leaving that, we're not putting a number to it.
Can you vector me in, the board member, where you're, where you're at?
We're in the same section, that first paragraph.
Four thirty-four point.
Three, three.
Okay.
And just referring to that, that actual first sentence there. The question is, what, what data policy is it's referring to? So would this be referred to as evidence then? Okay.
Microphone please, microphone.
Are we breaking down what the categories of data is? Data covers all of those things. So we have to leave it broad enough for data. Otherwise, we're going to be putting every item of data that's going to be covered.
I'm not asking them to, to do that. I'm, I'm just gaining understanding and making sure that the language is clear. That's all. Okay, I'll, I'll move on.
Phrase it, then I'm not understanding what you say. Just like changing the word from is to, to shall. Is responsible is concrete. Shall be responsible is, can be abstract.
No, shall, shall, they shall ensure. The whole thing is going to, is my suggestion. Yeah. And then this is, this is more of a legal question for the city attorney. And this second paragraph, it goes, it says, second sentence, therefore gunshot detection data should be purged unless it has become. It has become or is, it is reasonable to believe it has become evidence in a criminal or civil action, yada, yada, yada. Is, how are we defining reasonable here? I just want to, I just, I don't want any ambiguity when it comes to this. I, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Some, yeah, reasonable, reasonable is actually a standard.
Okay.
So I, I do agree with you, board member, that it, it can be broad. But it's basically what would a reasonable person in the same, situated in the same position, looking at that data. Deemed to be reasonable, right? So.
Sorry.
No, I am, I am. Go ahead.
Through the chair, I think if you read the, the last part of that sentence, it kind of makes a little more sense. And under those circumstances, the applicable data should be downloaded from the server and booked into evidence. So that means that it's this, again, we're talking about gunshot sounds, right? And the location and timestamp would then, then, this is more to the point of retention. So it would not, it would live beyond the thirty days and it would now be booked into evidence for the life of that criminal investigation. Because it now will be subject to the laws of evidence and things associated to that.
Right.
Okay, I'll let someone else go.
Any other comments, questions?
Sure. So a few questions and comments, starting right at the front, the four, three, four point two. In that sentence that's been added, all data gathered by GSAD, et cetera. It ends with such data may contain confidential information. It is not open to public review. But don't we get data every time we have a board meeting here that's open to public review? Is that not what the, the report we have at the end of our agenda includes?
We haven't given you any public information yet about gunshot detection. This is again, talking about just the data related to gunshot detection. What data are you talking about?
Sorry, let me be more clear. At the end of our agenda packet, we have a list of alerts and gunshot. Types, indications, incident numbers, locations, gunshot data.
Yeah.
This data is the actual recordings.
I'm sorry?
The data that it's being talked about in the policy are the actual recordings.
Okay, so.
You, you don't get those.
Should we not specify that? I mean, this seems like, is it broadly data? But we have data. So we're, we're, you're talking about recordings.
Right. The, the, the data produced by the system. So the data that, the data that we provide the board is statistical data that, that we take, you know, that we put together. Based upon what the system does throughout the month or throughout the period that, that we present to you.
Right. So it's, it's not just statistical data. It's the time and the location of the recording. So maybe, maybe we change it to something like recordings.
Yeah. And I'm open, we're open to suggestions about alternative language and things like that. I think the first sentence in that new area is, we are seeking to say, this data belongs to the Vallejo Police Department, not to some other entity. And again, we're trying to work towards that, those safeguards to make sure that it's not, can be perceived as someone else's data that they can have access to. So we're open to any kind of alternative language that sounds, sounds better to you guys. And also I'm not familiar with the, I'm not familiar with the data that we've been producing. So I, I'm kind of at a loss on that. So.
Sure.
I refer to you guys. Okay. You know, we would be okay with presenting the aggregate numbers, but you don't, you don't want to say at A and B street, there was, you know, multiple gunshots occurred at this time and this date. We're, we're not really wanting to give that data fully.
That's exactly what we have, no?
Is it? That's what I don't know. So that's what I'm asking.
It's like the, like the block, but not that this is specific, like house number or anything like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't think that provides any specific information. I mean, it's a number of, it's a number of detections and those kinds of things, right?
We have, for instance, gunshot on this date, at this time, Raven alert with the block number. So if others are okay with it, it's confusing to me because I, I read data broadly. I think it's meant to be read broadly. But then it says it's not open to public review and yet we're getting at least some compilation of that information here.
Yeah. And again, I think we're trying to, go ahead. Sorry.
And just to clarify, it's not, it's obviously, you know, it's, it's recordings, but also it's other, other data. That's collected by the, the, the Flock system, right? So it's like specific address, right? So perhaps a, you know, an edit. Just an addition of all raw data collected by GSAD or for the official use of this department. Would, would allow us to move forward.
That makes sense.
Thank you. Uh, next. I had four, three, four point, three point three. In the second paragraph. Begins all GSAD data downloaded to the server. I was wondering if perhaps we should broaden that to simply be all data downloaded. I know sometimes local computers, et cetera, contain information. Can we just remove to the server?
Uh, microphone again, please.
All right. Are you, are you, are you saying not just this GSAD? Because it does say all.
Right. I'm not talking about the data. I'm talking about that piece where it says downloaded, quote, to the server. My suggestion is we just eliminate that language to the server. Because I know you can download, for instance, to your local computer. And I want to make sure that the retention includes that as well.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Josh, can you give any, and when you talk to Captain Batista, can you give any clarification as it relates to the server? As opposed to the thirty days in which it is contained in the Flock system?
Yes. So in this context, the server actually is just downloaded. It's referencing being downloaded off the thing to a computer. Whether that be a server that we're storing it on, like evidence.com, or whether that be the desktop you're working on.
Okay. So you're reading the server as any, any desktop, any laptop, any server, any evidence locker?
Yeah, I think the way you're describing it is exactly what it's meant to say.
What it's meant to be. Okay.
So just, just to maybe move forward with that, can we just edit to just read? All downloaded data should be stored for no longer. And that way it'll, it'll cover any kind of data that's just downloaded from the web, you know, from the system over to. VPD in any capacity.
Yep.
Is this another situation where we're trying to make a distinction between the raw data and the, the higher level data that we're making public? So is it the raw data that we want to download or would, are we not going to keep the, the contents of the reports we get from the police department? Would those not be kept for more than a year?
This is a, a good point and perhaps why we should define data versus recordings.
Well, and just to, just to clarify there, I mean, any sort of data that would be downloaded by the police department would be the raw data. So the data that is in our packets is refined data from, you know, based on the, the raw data, right? So we're talking about raw data here in this context.
Okay, then we should probably say that explicitly then.
So just for clarification from the Flock side of things. So when data is downloaded from the Flock system. It then becomes evidence that is handled in the typical evidence, evidentiary fashion. So if you're talking about downloading data, then you could inadvertently be saying you can only hold on to this. Item of evidence for a certain period of time when, you know, court cases could be going on for a much longer time. So for, for Flock's data retention, we delete any and all data that isn't downloaded for, for retention. Or, or evidence after the prescribed period of time by the, the locality. So I just wanted to submit that in case there was a, a language adjustment that needed to be made there.
Yeah, the distinction is where it's living and what rules apply when it lives there. If it lives on the Flock system and a detective or an officer listens to it and sees it, he'll see all the data. That's gone in thirty days. But if they go, hey, I need this, like I need this and I'm going to need this for part of my investigation. You then pull that off to the server, right? Which is basically just anywhere off of the system. And now, we now kick into rules of evidence. We kick into city retention policies and certain things like that. It would need to be, so that's why that one year is in there because the city retention policy, you can't take now something down and go, oh, let me delete this, right? There, there is retention, rules and policies that are governed by the city clerk's office related to that now, that now information.
Thank you.
But I do, I did make the change through the chair about, if better stated, the downloaded data and then take out the other front server, if you guys want that, like that.
Thank you.
Appreciate, yeah.
Board member boss.
Two more quick comments. Same paragraph beginning thereafter. Does this language, that sentence come from our retention policy, from the department's retention policy? The language, therefore GSAD data should be purged unless it has become or it is reasonable to believe, et cetera. And I, I wonder, because I'm wondering whether we include this language at all. If in the sentence just prior, we say it should be in accordance with the established records retention schedule. Maybe eliminate that language if we're already referring to the retention schedule. So there's no conflict between this language and the retention policy.
So that, that language is a copy and paste from the ALPR approved policy. In relation to if something is pulled from the Flock system and now becomes evidence of a crime. So I don't want to, I don't want to change it too much because then it would contradict now potentially the ALPR policy.
That sentence is, is, requires some affirmative action. So after the one year, it must be purged, right? That data must be purged after the one year time period unless it's an exception. Unless it has become or it is reasonable to believe that it will become basically evidence in a, in a crime that's being investigated. Or a civil action. Sometimes we have civil actions that require us to preserve that data as well. So this is, uh, this is a requirement that it be purged to ensure that it does get purged as part of the policy. And then also to carve out that exception if it's part of evidence in a, in a legal case.
Thank you. I, I think I understand that. My, my concern is, I'm just wondering if it's verbatim what's in our actual retention policy.
I can, I can speak on that. So four twenty-six point five, the data collection and retention, which is in the ALPR policy. The sentence in that one is thereafter, ALPR data should be purged unless it has become. Or is reasonable to believe it will become evidence in a criminal or civil action or subject to discovery request or lawful action to produce records. So the only difference was we changed it to the, the GSAD.
Right.
Language.
Thank you. And that's the ALPR.
The ALPR, it's four twenty-six point five.
So is there a department-wide retention, record retention policy?
Yes.
There, there's a citywide records retention policy.
The sentence before refers to that, right? The established records retention schedule. That's not referring to the ALPR policy. That's referring to the larger retention policy of the city. All, I don't disagree with this language. I just want to make sure that it is verbatim what is in that policy. The official retention schedule so that we're not in conflict. So that this policy doesn't suggest something different than the overall retention schedule.
I can underline, I believe it is what is in the retention based upon the way it's written. We will double check that before we do it. But this, this whole paragraph is a safeguard. It is a safeguard that we don't just have employees just willy nilly have a bunch of data from various systems, ALPR or gunshot detection. They have specific things they have to do with that data.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Lastly, and I promise this one is much quicker. Is the, the following paragraph beginning GSAD vendor. I think there's an errant comma right after vendor. And maybe just say shall instead of will. And then in the second sentence there, GSAD vendor shall purge instead of will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments and questions on this? Okay, sorry, board member Marin.
So we know that this audio, thank you, audio detection is not just going to be for gunshots. It's also listening for sideshows and.
Fireworks.
Uh, and potentially, correct me if I'm wrong, represented from Flock, Trevor. Is it going to be able to also hear glass breaking, cars getting broken into, potentially cries for help or screams?
I can take that and then Trevor can piggyback on it. I understand that those are possible new features to the Flock system. Those are not enabled by our department. We have no policy. We have no process for the, the, the later ones that you just mentioned.
Got it. Okay. So going back to sideshows, fireworks, how are those being treated? From the department? For, I think sideshow is more important because we have, if we look at the data, there's tons of sideshow reports that came through the. The data that we'll go over later, but there's a good amount there. So how are. How are police with this, you know, it's gunshot detection, but also audio detection? How are we all handling like the calls for that? Or how are you all treating that? Like where's that built out?
Well, first I'd like to address, you make a very good point, which is we are being very specific about gunshot detection. Because that, I mean, that's the primary use that we use this Raven technology for. But it does detect other audio sounds. Again, I'm just throwing it out to the board, perhaps. just throwing it out to the board, perhaps we, and we could ask, ask Trevor as well, put the technical name for what this software is, and not, I mean, I don't want to say remove gunshot altogether, because that is a strong portion, and maybe we even add a line in there to kind of talk about the different features that we are currently using. I mean, you bring up a good, a point, board member, that when we start talking about the purpose and scope, um, I think we could add some sections about what features we do have. I give an example, if we decide to at some point address the SAB about, hey, we were thinking about enabling the screaming, um, alerts type of thing, that would be something we would bring back to the board and discuss and, and talk about and things like that. So, um, you bring up a very good point. Trevor, is there, we're, we've called this policy the gunshot audio detection system, but because it does detect other auditory sounds that are going to be captured in this raw data, is there a more generic term that you would suggest?
Uh, audio, general audio detection, um, is, is another option, and, um, as was stated, all the alternative, um, alerts are purely opt-in, um, and so they will remain off until authorized. Uh, so, you, you're allowed, you are all able to customize the system, so you're only getting the alerts for the audio that you want to get alerts for.
Just to comment on that, I, I think use of general audio detection would, would be problematic, of, like, being over-inclusive and not, you know, not specifically for the purposes that, that the police department is, is, is employing Flock.
And I'll defer to the board in terms of maybe some recommendations, um, I do think it's a valuable point that we are capturing other audio sounds, be it the two others or sideshows and fireworks, um, is there any suggestions from the board in terms of where we could potentially put that in the policy? Because the data would be the same, right? The, the data that's captured is the same.
Just like, um, I mean, it's, I, I, I think, I mean, it's a dilemma, I think clarifying a little bit more is going to be problematic language, but maybe, a board member, Owen?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, uh, one of the things you've gotten here is how you respond to it, and I think if you're talking about different kinds of things, you're probably going to have a different response, so, I don't, I don't think you can just add in, like, I, it may actually make it more complicated to have a policy that covers them all, so my recommendation would be, just do gunshot, because that's what you're doing, and then let, let's revisit it when you want to add something else, and we can either tear off a new policy and, you know, that's like this, uh, but I don't think, I think we're going to run into trouble if we start to make this more general ahead of when we need it.
I don't disagree, and just for the purposes of information for the board, we don't have a particular response protocol for if we get a sideshow alert or a fireworks alert, we are only using that for aggregate data to look at the system, to prevent it, to provide it to you guys, um, that's not something we have a separate protocol that I would put in here, so, I'm okay with doing that, but again, I just wanted to pose it to the board.
Through the chair, I would, my suggestion would be that we move forward with what we have, I mean, barring any other, um, additions or deletions, and I have a few actually, um, but I think we, we bring it back sooner rather than later, I, I don't want us to be in this position again, where you're going to counsel saying, "Hey, I have a policy," they're like, "No, you don't," and we're, we're back here again and, and we're delayed on whatever additional uses for that technology. So, I would just suggest that maybe we, we can bring it, bring back the rest of that at a future meeting, um, so that we can, again, continue with this, but also not wait until we're asked to do something, we'd just be proactive and do it, um, in a future meeting.
Sounds, sounds good to me, but I wanted to make a, um, maybe supplemental clarification on, on, on B. Now, my understanding is this is, you know, the board's discussing and considering these revisions and essentially approving these revisions, or an understanding that is going to be finalized by another draft edit, uh, for which we can formally approve, uh, but, that we are, we are reviewing and approving this policy and not making a recommendation for Flock in general. That's, that's what item B is, that's my understanding, and, um, it seems, you know, I'm getting some head nods, it seems like that's a consensus, but Attorney Reisner, can you please confirm that?
Yes, that, that is, you, you, the board has already made a recommendation as to the, the gunshot detection system, um, so this is back to you, because counsel asks for additional work from the board, being this policy, the audit plan, and then taking a look at the revised contract language.
Super, um, okay, sounds good, so, it seems like we've got, uh...
Sorry, through the chair, I have two more, if I can, if I may.
Two more what?
I have two more, just quick things, if I, if I may. For this item, yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Um, I just, this is more, this is a question for Randy here, um, would it be appropriate, and, and maybe it's not necessary, maybe I'm overthinking here, uh, for item, uh, section forty-three, uh, four-three-four, uh, point three-four, accountability and safeguards, item D, uh, would it be appropriate to add, uh, in accordance with California law at the end of that, or?
Absolutely, that, yeah, I, I, I would be perfectly, I, in fact, I would prefer that, to be honest with you, so that, that's a good add.
In accordance with, with California law, I would like, like to add to that, and to the end of that sentence, and then, um, in the next section down, oh, wait, let me know when you're in, okay, in the next section down under training, um, again, it says should, I would rather it say shall, I think that's more, uh, direct and forceful, and correct me if I'm wrong to the attorney, right, or?
No, that, I, I think that's correct, yes, I agree.
I prefer it say shall, so the system, the system administrator shall ensure, rather than should, I think that's more stringent language.
And that's consistent with the last, the last sentence that says that they can't access the system without training, so.
Right, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, board member Stuart, okay, so look, seems like we've got really good, um, drafts, proposal for, for a finalized version for us to review.
So is that, is that the process? So, I'm not averse to any of the, the corrections that has been requested, I think there's about six or seven.
Right, it's, yeah, it's just, I just want to, you know, make sure we have a chain of custody for all these edits, because, you know, they've been given here, you know, back and forth, and so that we could redline against what we, what, what we've been given in print for us, for the board to review, our board to approve.
Can we codify for the record, is that through the secretary, is that something that can be documented in the minutes, whether it's through the chair, or I can read them off just to go through and make sure that, that way, once we're done, that's what, that's what was agreed to?
Sure.
Okay, so I have, um, in the very four-three-four-point-two, um, it was, is asked for, we change that to "all raw data," is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to confirm, you're going to, you're going to cross out because such, and then change it to "all raw data collected by G S A D."
Right, and to clarify, "all ra, raw data" should be on, uh, should be edited on the second sentence as well as the third, the last sentence. "All raw data" to start off the second sentence.
Got it.
And then, uh, because all...
So, "all raw data" and then "all raw data," got it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in four-three-four-point-three-point-three, um, we are changing in the very first sentence, "is responsible for ensuring," we are changing it to "shall ensure," is that correct? The last sentence of that paragraph, we are taking that out, that was an erroneous carryover from ALPR. Uh, in the beginning of the second paragraph, uh, the way I show it is it will say, "All G S A downloaded data should be stored," so we're removing to the server, is that correct?
It should be all G S A data downloaded should be stored, yeah.
Oh, so we're not going to switch downloaded data, just going to be as-is, just take out the server?
Because data is redundant, you already have it.
Data downloaded should be stored.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, then in the next page, uh, the sentence that starts G S A vendor, taking out the comma, thank you for that, uh, we're going to change the will to shall, and in the second sentence there, we're going to change the will purge to shall, is that correct?
Yes.
In four-three-four-point-three-point-four, section D, uh, on that last, uh, we're going to finish that sentence with "in accordance with California law," right after purposes, is that correct? And then in four-three-four-point-three-point-five, we are going to change "system administrator shall," we're going to remove should and put shall, is that correct?
Yeah, those, those are all the edits I see, actually, there's...
Yes.
Not an edit, but I, I would appreciate it if you could confirm that that one sentence in the second paragraph of four-three-four-three-three is verbatim or corresponds with the, the record retention schedule at large?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair, do we make a motion that these edits that we just named are on the record?
I think we can do that, Secretary.
You, you can do that, yes, if you choose to.
Do a motion, yeah.
I make a motion that all the edits that were just confirmed, um, um, we have a vote on that, I make a motion that that, those edits are in place and are a matter of record.
Second.
Okay.
Stuart?
Hi.
Cohen Thompson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Randy, before we move on to the next item, does, do we know when the next meeting is, and will this motion with these changes allow us to go to city council with the, um, understanding that these changes are approved and will be finalized by SAB, or no?
The, the, the answer to, is, is yes, that, and the next meeting would be in January. The next meeting of SAB would be in January, but I, I, I think we all realize, do you see, that, that this needs to get to council before the end of the year because of the funding limitations?
Okay.
And then council will decide, I mean, if, if that's not good enough for council, that's their decision, ultimately.
So, just to clarify to the city attorney, given the, the calendar and the schedule, will council be able to review the edits that SAB has just put into the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, super, um, now, moving on to the last item, uh, review and consideration of revised privacy language, that was shared by Attorney Reisner, um, Attorney Reisner, would you like to just provide some context, maybe?
Yes, I, yes, please.
And the purpose for the change, and, and maybe, um, a little bit of context of what drove the change, if it was presented at, uh, city council?
Sure. Manny, am I able to share screens?
Yes, you should be able to.
Uh, well, it says not turned on, it says send requests, I'm, I'm assuming that goes to you, so I just did it.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so now I'm going to share. There we go. All right, can you all see that now?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, there are two sections within the Flock master agreement that deal with privacy issues. These are sections that have come to the SAB before, so let me back up a little bit, and I explained this a little bit earlier, um, so when we took the gunshot detection, uh, system to council for approval, we took the wrong contract, we took the contract, the, the normal form contract that Flock uses for, for, uh, every customer. We had modified that extensively previously, in fact, that same contract, and a, which copy of it's in your, in your packet, or was sent to you, um, that packet, that contract came before the SAB, um, and we added, uh, suggestions from the board into the contract, uh, as well as suggestions from the city, or edits from the city attorney's office. So, it went to council without those changes that we'd already made, so council didn't see that, so they were concerned about the language in the standard contract, which was the wrong contract, um, and they hadn't seen these changes, um, and they asked us to go back to Flock and, and make some changes. So, we got the correct contract and saw the changes that we'd made before, of course, but then I also, um, had a meeting with Flock's attorneys, um, and the other staff, and asked for some additional changes, and on the redlined form are the changes that I asked for, so section four-point-three and section five-point-three are the two sections in the master agreement that deal with, uh, privacy issues that we want to have some input on. Section four-point-three, which originally we modified fairly heavily from the standard agreement, uh, Flock has now agreed to remove, so that entire section would come out. Section five-point-three, which also was modified extensively, uh, from the original master agreement, I have added the language that's in redline in order to strengthen the, that section, uh, a bit more. And these changes are at Flock right now, I sent them to them, I have not heard back yet from Flock, um, but, given my conversation with them previously, I think that they're going to be okay with that language.
Thank you, Attorney Reisner, I just have a question about the, the first, um, uh, the four-point-three, uh, anonymous.
Sure.
Did Flock, uh, communicate any, any reason why they, they wanted to remove that entirely?
Because we asked them to.
I'm sorry?
We asked them to do it.
Okay, okay.
Through, through the chair, this was one of the issues that council raised, this section, so in, instead of kind of going back and forth, they just said, "Just take it out, it's fine," and I think that will peace council.
Right.
Super, thank you, so, uh, uh, turning to, um, section five-point-three, just clarification on the last sentence, um, you know, it reads, "In the, in the event of an emergency involving immediate risk to life, liberty, or property, Flock may disclose the data subject," is that, is there, is that a typo?
May disclose the data "subject to the indemnification set forth herein."
Okay, got it, "data subject to," okay, very, very...
Right.
All right, so, um, my, just, um, turning to the sentence that reads, um, and it's your, on, on your edit, "Flock may preserve the data," um, but, um, I think, and what's the language that you put, but then?
But shall then promptly seek customers' consent before any disclosure.
So, just to, wanted to add stronger language to "must" there, and then also, "then promptly seek customers..."
You mean, "must preserve the data?"
Uh, "must," yeah, "must promptly seek customers," and then, you know, sorry, there's two parts of that sentence I'd like to talk about, so just sticking with the first part, "Flock may preserve the data but must..."
Okay, it says "shall" now, that's, that's mandatory.
Okay, okay, that's fine, okay, so the next, that's fine, um, that, um, I was reading a different version, okay, so...
No worries.
Then, the next part, um, "then promptly seeks customers' consent," um, now consent is, you know, um, you know, you, you can have implicit, explicit consent, so I'd prefer language, um, that reads, "Then promptly seek customers' written authorization before any disclosure," if you have any issues with that.
Sure, I, that, I can do that. So, it would read now, "Flock may preserve the data but shall then promptly seek customers' written authorization before any disclosure."
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, uh, the last, um, edit, uh, is the next sentence, "However customer may take whatever action it deems necessary or advisable to prevent such disclosure," and then, um, I, um, just to clarify, um, I'd like a sentence, uh, maybe, um, to, to be added that states as follows, or something similar, "Customer must be notified immediately of any such planned disclosure."
You mean, related to an emergency disclosure?
Yes.
Okay, yes, let me, uh, I'm just going to add that now, so that...
No, no further edits for me, but other, um, edits, questions from the board?
Through the chair, I just want to point out one part of this, as you guys can see, if you guys can see it on your screen, or here, I'm looking at the screen, down about three-quarters of the way where it says "customer's policy," and then puts "policy" in parentheses, not only is that, did that previously include the SAB-approved ALPR policy, that will now also include the gunshot detection policy, so all of the provisions therein also are codified now in... So all of the provisions therein also are codified now in this MSA.
Thank you.
Can I ask, will this modified master service agreement apply retroactively to all Flock technology that we have deployed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we have, well, let me, let me clarify that. Retroactively means going back.
Sorry, I, I misspoke. I don't mean retroactively. Will it apply going forward to all?
Yes, correct, correct. Yes, absolutely will. This is the master agreement applies to all Flock technology. So just, just so the board understands, the way Flock does agreements and it's not uncommon in the world out there, a lot of companies do it. They have a master agreement and they sell several different products, right? So there's a master agreement and then they use order forms when you purchase specific products from them that refer back to this master agreement.
And that's where we ran into problems with the council. They had just attached to the order form for gunshot technology, just the standard, run-of-the-mill master service agreement. And that's during the council meetings when we as staff realized, I'm not a lawyer, by the way, I was like, this is the wrong MSA.
It was the wrong one.
It was the wrong, wrong one. So we now got, the good news is, we had a meeting, an extensive meeting with Flock and we realized during this meeting, this is not the right SAB-approved MSA that we're now attaching it. I had thought it had to be a separate contract, but now I understand MSA covers everything.
Yeah, Veronica and I already knew that it wasn't because we, we remember working on it. So, and we remember bringing it to Flock and Flock giving some input on both of these sections. Or bring it to SAB, excuse me.
Good news is the less of a problem than we thought we had that, that night, so.
I had a, maybe a clarification. So in five point three, number two, which is discussing Flock and a good faith belief. I'm, I'm sort of struggling to understand Flock's position after they have a good faith belief. They come to promptly seek the customer's written authorization. But I'm, it's not clear to me in here that they need any written authorization. Is that, is that your reading that they do then need written authorization?
Yes, it's required. They can't disclose it without seeking written authorization. The only thing they can do is preserve it.
Right, maybe, maybe it's the lawyer and me, but seeking written authorization is not the same as getting written authorization. So are they required to actually receive written authorization?
I can change, I can change it to get.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay.
So the change would be from seek to get, is that right?
Yeah, I just, it's on the, it's on the screen. I just did it.
Receive. I think we could.
Or receive, yeah.
But shall then promptly, you want me to change it to receive?
That it requires that, it requires a written authorization. That's very simple, to the point, and understandable. To seek it and must, but to require, in order to get this, you have to do the written authorization. So in my mind, some people are using their mind, require is a strong word.
Agree with that. Can we add require, please?
All right, hold on a second, because I, now, now it's changed the entire grammatical structure here. I have to, I have to figure out how to do it. Flock may preserve the data, data. But...
What is a strong legal word? Seek is not necessarily a strong legal word.
Oops.
I'm not a lawyer, but I do know something about contracts and words.
So I, I, yeah, I, it, this, this works, but they shall, yeah, they shall get the authorization before they make the disclosure. That, that, that works too, but this is, this is fine. Flock, so it reads now, "Flock may preserve the data, but customers' written authorization shall be required before any disclosure."
I think that works for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other suggestions, edit questions?
My only question is, we're talking about getting authorization. Who are they actually seek, who is the individual within the department or the city that they're actually getting authorization from? Is it the city manager? Is it the chief of police? Who is, who is this individual that will be authorizing this potentially?
Who would you like for it to be?
No, I'm asking like current, currently, like who is, who, who, when, when the contract is negotiated, who is the contact person within PD that is handling this? Is it Captain Batista?
Who's responsible for the Flock system, Bobby?
It should, if you, would probably be the chief of police.
So it'd be, it'd be chief top.
The chief, or designee, something like that. And then, of course, the, the natural chain of events would be, we would go to the city attorney's office immediately.
Well, I'm not referring to the, like, the language specifically. I'm just asking if, if, if they're coming to us, who are they going to in, in, like, as?
Yeah. Do you, would you like, we can include that in the, in the.
That's not necessarily my ask.
Okay.
My ask is just, who is the individual currently? Who, who is the point person for Flock within PD that has signing authority?
Well, okay, you, 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 you said signing authority, that's different, right? So if you're not asking for contract language, just informational.
Signing, signing authority is the chief who, who has the, who then has the authority to designate other people to sign on his behalf.
Okay, that, that clarified that. Thank you.
Okay.
Or, or memorably.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not putting in the Flock contract who they, okay, good, because that's our, that's our business.
Correct.
It's, I think we're, I think we're good on edits, Attorney, City Attorney Reisner.
Can we, can we do the same thing we did with the, the policy and get you to vote? Because all the edits are on the screen.
Board Secretary? Okay, actually, yeah. A motion to preserve the edits recorded at the meeting. Sorry, motion for the board to approve the, the edits made at, at this meeting.
Second.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cohen Thompson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Super. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, moving now to the information calendar. Monthly technology usage reports for drones, cell site simulator, Flock L, ALPR cameras, Flock Raven gunshot detection system. Over to you, Lieutenant Ty, thank you.
So, excuse me. So we provided the same reports that we have with any edits that were previously requested for ALPR, the drone flights, cell site simulator. So if you just want to take some time to review those, you have questions you'd like to ask about either one of those reports, Lieutenant Kate and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Through the chair. So thank you for, well, Captain Batista specifically, or I guess Alan, the analyst, for Attachment Six. I think as we move forward with the Flock technology and we, we see we have proven that, that the, the gunshot detection system works, or it's, yeah, it works. I don't think, just me personally, Attachment Five is any, not, any, any necessary any longer. I think Attachment Six achieves what we're trying to achieve. And at this point, in my mind, it's just a waste of paper. But so if the rest of the bodies is, I mean, able to that, I would like to just, just remove and I guess sort of replace Attachment Five with Attachment Six moving forward. And, but still have the ties to Raven alerts to actual confirmation of shots fired.
I'm sorry, Board Member, sir, can you help me point out to which exactly ones you're looking?
Sure. Attachment Six.
Is which one?
Are the matches? The, the colorful page we all have here? All the way at the end, page forty-five and page forty?
Three, forty-five.
Yeah, chapter forty-three to forty-five, yeah. And I, I believe that.
We can eliminate that.
No, 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 no. I think that's, that's the intent of what we were, we were trying to get at. Yes, with, with Attachment Five, I think that the intent was to get to what Attachment Six looks like. Does that make sense? So that a hit, a Raven hit is actually tied to a shots fired response, right? Make, does that make sense? And so, go ahead.
Yes, that does make sense. So you want to eliminate the list of shots fired calls and then Raven alerts? Sixteen-page list.
Correct, exactly. Because, yeah, again, the point was to see, to say, hey, you know, let's tie it to an actual shots fired confirmation, right? But we get a bunch of pages here and it's honestly hard to track at some point. But I think again, six hits on exactly what the intent behind it was when this body asked for it early this year, personally. But I would like to keep the total amount of, of total alerts and shots fired rather than have, I don't know, it's just fifteen pages of information that's hard to. I'm sorry? It, it can be there, that's fine.
Well, on this one, it has the total gunshot alerts.
Okay, and the actual shots fired, perfect. So, yeah, so we have it there. I don't think we need to have it twice in a raw form. But again, that's, I'm one person and there's six of us here, so it's going to be seven, so, yeah.
If I may, so just so I understand that the last attachment, which is combining the shots fired with the Raven alert, this is just confirmed shots fired associated with a Raven alert, right? So a Raven alert goes off, but you're able to actually confirm that there were shots at that location via shell casing, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay, so it won't include something where suspect shots have been fired, you got a Raven alert, but you're unable to find evidence of it when you arrive at the scene?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So that was the one that, well, Captain Batista was, was talking about how they confirm it, whether it be another caller or something to that effect.
Right, there has to be some confirmation.
Correct, something concrete with it.
Okay, all right. So this is just things you've confirmed, this is the entirety of, of the Raven alerts that you've confirmed there's actually been shots fired? Okay. So in that case, I, I would be supportive of. I, I would also support removing the, the prior lengthy piece of information, as long as we have the totals like Board Member Stuart mentioned.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks for your time, Charlie. Thank you.
Do we have to go through future agenda items?
Yeah.
So Charlie, I have, may I make a suggestion on future agenda items to hopefully save the board a little bit of time?
Didn't hear that, City Attorney?
Yes, is it, may I make a suggestion to save the board a little bit of time on the future agenda items?
Please.
I, I have some questions about them that I'll ask in a second. But what we can do, since they're here under future agenda items, in order to avoid, or actually just hopefully streamline that two, that two-step process, if you'd like to do it, I can recommend that you can make a motion this evening to agendize them at the next meeting so that we don't have to go through two meetings to get to them. But I have some, I have some comments and questions first, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, yes. Go, go ahead, Board Member, please.
Our last meeting, those were our future agenda items. So they should not be future agenda items on this meeting. Those should have been discussion items or items with information provided because we voted last time to put those on. So we said that these items were to be on today. Last meeting, that, that's in the minutes.
The, the.
Why is it still under future agenda items? And that was my confusion about.
No, we.
What an agenda item goes for. If we put it on last week, last meeting, then we're discussing it this meeting. It does not have to be agendized a second time. We asked them to make it an agenda item last meeting. So that should have been a discussion item, these items or presentations. It should not, there should be no future agenda items on the agenda until we put them on for the next one. And then those becomes items of, of discussion or presentation. Because we asked for that on Sep, in the September meeting. So to have that say we need another appro, we already approved that that's, we already agreed, not approved.
There's, there's.
We wanted those items.
Board Member, there's.
And I was going through my Rosenberg and I have had extensive training with the city on motions and I couldn't see where we needed to do this again to be an agenda item because we put it on the agenda, it should have been on the agenda for this time because that was requested last time.
May I address that?
So I think, I don't know what to think on that.
Are you guys have, are you, are you guys having trouble hearing me?
We can, we can hear you.
We hear very well.
Okay, sorry. Sure, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to address that, Board Member. So the city has a mandatory two-step process to agenda, for, for a board or commission to agendize items, for board members to agendize items. So it first has to be approved to put on the agenda to consider whether the board wants to agendize it. That's step one, right? Then it goes on an agenda, then the board considers whether or not it wants to agenda it at a regular meeting. That, and then it goes on to a next, another, another agenda. So that's basically three meetings in order to get an item on the agenda. All I'm suggesting tonight is, is to, since they're already on again as future agenda items, that we skip one of those steps so that we don't have to go through a second meeting, you know, in order for you to deliberate on them. I'm suggesting that you do a motion tonight so that you can deliberate on them at the next meeting.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the two-step future.
It's in chapter two point two six of the municipal code. It's a requirement of all, all boards and commissions. In fact, it's also a requirement at city council.
It is two-step. We just did whatever we determined that was future agenda items, that was on the agenda for the next meeting. But as you say, you're the attorney, I cannot argue with you.
No, it's okay. You can argue with me all you want. It's all right.
No, I, I don't argue. I don't argue. You say that is, I, I know for a fact that isn't in every commission. But if that is on the books.
It's supposed to be.
This one has to do, then I do what we have to do on.
Okay.
On this commission.
Through the chair, I think the secretary, you were going to clarify.
Well, the, these agendas were moved because of what council asked to put on this particular agenda.
That too, yes.
Council doesn't change our agenda.
Can I step in here? So this, I just, so I was just listening and trying to understand. So these items aren't actually on the September agenda, actually, at all.
That we talked about.
Right, right, right. We brought it up during this portion of the agenda.
Right.
Right, so, but I think the, I think the miscommunication is, is that it doesn't say, you know, like item, future agenda item A, does the city have a, does the city sign an NDA with?
Number twelve on the minutes for last meeting.
Right, no, no, no. I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, it doesn't say as requested by so-and-so because it was actually, it was requested at that last meeting. It wasn't requested at the meeting prior to that.
And I, and I think I probably didn't do a very good job of explaining the. And I and I think I probably didn't do a very good job of explaining the process to you.
On the agenda for this meeting.
Correct, but what he's saying is now and now I understand if you've kind of gone through this and had some time to think about it. Is that this wasn't this was asked last meeting, right? And so because it was asked for last meeting, we have to discuss it at this meeting, whether or not we want it on the next meeting. That's been the process for all the commissions.
Correct.
Because because.
That's fine.
Why do you want to clarify one more thing just for the record too? Because it's not actually in the in the minutes. Well, it is in the minutes, but but it's not. We didn't have a discussion. It was a request from.
That we would have it on the agenda for discussion for this meeting.
Agreed. No, I I hear what you're saying, but the the miscommunication is that it's it's supposed to be discussed here whether or not we want to have it act an actual actionable item in the next meeting.
Right.
That's the confusion.
Thank you. I think we should move forward now. Attorney Reiser, you had some questions on the future agenda.
Yes, please, so. On on all of them, actually, just to kind of clear up what it is we need to do to get prepared for you. So the first one, does the city sign an NDA with technology vendors? I can answer that question now. The answer is no. An NDA would never be effective with a public agency in California because of the Public Records Act. We can't sign away the legal requirements of the Public Records Act with a with a non-disclosure agreement. So I'm not sure what it is you'd want to you'd want to talk about about NDAs. If someone can provide some guidance on that, that would be helpful.
All right, so I actually wrote a an email to the city attorney on this topic, and it is related to how we manage of information about vendors when we're doing an or doing a an evaluation of whether to to purchase them, right? And we've had vendors, particularly LiveView, who said they will not give us that data without an NDA. And I think we need to discuss how we're going to proceed in that situation where we're not able to get the information we need from the vendor without it, and they're insisting on an NDA.
Well, I can't. Here's the problem. Even if we sign an NDA, I can't promise to it. It it won't work. We can't promise to a vendor that we won't release information that we they provide to us. Whenever they provide information or a document to us, an email to us, whatever it is, that becomes a city owned record, which is a public record. The Brown Act requires that public records are disposable to the public with with very few exceptions. So that's the reason an NDA won't work. We can agendize that and we can go into greater detail on that if you'd like to do that, but we certainly we can do that.
I mean, one of one of the things we're working on in the in the working group is questionnaires for the vendors so that we come to these meetings already with answers to the questions we're likely to ask. And we're trying to figure out how we're going to how we're going to get the vendor to fill out that questionnaire. You know, if if they feel that the answers are proprietary information.
Yeah, I mean, I I I see the dilemma. But again, I can't, you know, there's no city can make a promise to a vendor that we won't disclose the data. And this comes up from time to time and and we we have vendor sentence agreements with confidentiality provisions in them. And but we have an exception in there so that they know, you know, we have we have something in California called the Public Records Act, which requires us to disclose documents. And your, you know, we'll keep it confidential to the extent the law allows us to do that. Or we add language in there that says, you know, if somebody asks for that document, we'll give you ten days notice of that so that you can go challenge it in court. So that language is added into the agreements with the vendors now.
Okay.
But an NDA in and of itself is an unenforceable agreement for for a city.
All right. All right, the the question on NDA was really trying to get at how we're going to solve to deal with this this vendor problem. So I don't think the the answer, which you've already given, is we really need to discuss it.
So shall I leave that one or take it off then?
I think you can take that off.
Okay.
Then your other questions.
The other, yes, the second one is policy and data sharing with any federal agency. So there are two laws in California. One prohibits us from sharing information with federal immigration authorities. The second one prevent prohibits us from or prohibits the police department, the in the city's police department from sharing any information with any law enforcement agency outside of the state of California. I don't know if that clears up the question on that one or not.
Yeah, I think that's sufficient, so I think that we can also close that one out.
All right. And then the last one is list all laws prohibiting data sharing. I'm hoping that somebody can narrow that for me a bit because that can be extensive and require a lot of time to put together if if you want us to bring you a list of all laws that prohibit data sharing.
I don't recall who suggested this at the last meeting. Does anyone want to respond?
I remember discussing this at last meeting for a future agenda item. It may. I think the the concept here is to wrap our heads around and get a better idea of the laws that you as city attorney are referring to, the policies that you're referencing with respect to sharing of surveillance data in particular.
Okay, tho those, sure, we can. I can. I can bring copies of those sections back at the next meeting for the board to look at. And we can discuss them, you know, it it then if you want, that helps a lot. Because what I don't want to do is, you know, go through the entire United States to figure out what everybody's doing with data sharing.
No, 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 absolutely, yeah. So, okay, I think you have a better idea now.
I do. I I could. I can. I can take care of that. So then that's the only I the board need to make a motion on to to put on the action calendar for next meeting.
I think there are a couple other items too that I want to make sure are included so that we can wrap everything together, if that makes sense.
What is that?
For instance, we have a item ten A here was an audit plan. So hopefully by January, we'll have we actually have one to take a look at. So shouldn't that be an item for a future agenda?
That that one, I think we've already directed, but yes, we can. We don't need to vote on that one tonight. We we already know that that has to come back because we already started work on that.
Okay, well, due to the confusion of what's on the agenda, I just want to make sure so.
Got I got it.
All right, great.
Lance, you have that to come back, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then similarly, I don't know if if maybe Board Member Stewart, you could speak to this, whether we want something on the agenda to discuss ongoing work on the work plan or the broader audit policy?
Yeah, I think you read my notes here. Absolutely.
That. That one would not need this approval either because that is already that's already something the board started. That can come back anytime.
So can we make sure that comes back to the on the January meeting? Maybe I don't know, actually. Well, yeah, because we'll have a new board member and we maybe maybe want to discuss it with them and give them time to look over it.
Lance, Lance, have you got that down?
So this is the audit plan we're bringing?
Uh, the, I guess, a report from on on the work plan.
Yes. And work plan and and the well, I don't know if you'll have time to meet about the audit plan before then, but you were. I don't know if we'll have all the information to you by then either, so. But that could be included as part of the work plan discussion, I think.
And then finally, and maybe this doesn't have to be an agenda item so much as a report, but I'm hoping that our other ad hoc committee regarding the mobile camera policy can provide some updates. We may have a a pretty robust policy. We've been working with the police department to put it together. I would like that to be an item for discussion in January as well, so we can perhaps share a policy and get approval. So will that be an agenda item as well?
Yes, so I want to. I want to clarify something for the board too. So when we say future agenda items, these are things, this would be totally new things for the board to to consider, right? So if you've already approved something like you've proved that you've approved the ad hoc committee for the work plan, you've approved the ad hoc committee for the mobile camera policy. Those are all things that are basically work, board work that's in process. So that can come back anytime without another future agenda item. All right, so we have one brand new future agenda item, which is the is the laws prohibiting data sharing in California. And that's what I would need a vote from the board for us to put on action calendar next time.
One one quick question, so would it be a report from an ad hoc committee if we were to present the policy with respect to the mobile camera surveillance?
Yes.
So that's just a that's just a report. What if we actually want to?
Take action.
On the approval.
It it depends, and if they have if they have a if they have the policy ready, that could go on action as approving the policy. It could be that if they have the policy ready, that actually the report and the and the actual vote on the policy could both be on action.
So it'd be on the action calendar?
Yes.
And how do we get it on the action calendar? Because I would like.
Lance will put it on the action calendar if you have, you know, you need to provide us with a copy of the proposed policy and we'll put that on the action calendar.
Excellent, so when do we need to provide that to you?
The meetings have to be noticed seventy two hours in advance, so before that.
Okay.
Secretary, do you have? Do you have the future items?
So just want to clarify, so it's the so we're going to bring back the work plan and the LVT to our policy. Those are the two.
Yes.
As well as the list all the laws prohibiting data sharing.
If they you need to give me a vote on that, Charlie, on the list all laws prohibiting data sharing.
Yeah, yeah, we'll 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 vote now.
Okay.
Um, Stewart?
Yes.
Cohen Thompson?
Your phone, please.
Motion to list all laws prohibiting data sharing for our next.
That will come back to us next next meeting.
Correct.
Yes.
Or Ben Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Oh, I would.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, super. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Thank you, everybody.